All right, we're gonna start this meeting. The time is four thirty six, Committee of the Whole, considering three pieces of legislation, namely, proposed Resolution twenty four approving the establishment of standing committee of the whole meetings, proposed ordinance nine, amending the composition of police, and then proposed ordinance ten. I want to move forward on this is I want to consider twenty four to establish the standing meetings and then consider each legislation as it is, legislation ordinance number nine, the amending the police, and then move to amend, to consider the amendment of the composition of the fire. Most of those discussions will be led by the Vice Chairman of the Committee of the Whole with regard to the police and fire. But I'm gonna leave the discussion and open up with the proposed resolution for twenty four, which is to establish a standing meeting. I wanna, I want to consider two proposals, and then open it up to the council for your discussion and consideration. The first proposal would be to have a standing meeting, the second and third Wednesdays at four thirty, which would allow for one committee meeting, not hampered by a six P. M. pre-conference, and then one additional committee meeting prior to the pre-conference on the third. So it'd be three meetings consecutively. You'll meet pre-conference, regular meeting on the first, committee meeting on the second Wednesday, and then regular meeting on the third. The other proposal is to have both committee meetings at four o'clock on the first and third Wednesday. Right? So those are my recommendations, but now I want to leave it open to the council for further discussion.
Mine, mine would be to suggest maybe have a Tuesday meeting instead of trying to look at legislation right before a vote, in case there's any questions that arise either the day before or sometime that week. I just can tell you, I mean, you just, I don't think that's enough time to digest legislation and be expected to vote on it, especially if questions arise the day before, and that gives everybody time.
So this, so this would be that an agenda would be set, so if, if legislation came up the first week, it would not be the expectation that it would be considered like the next day in that aspect? So you would still have time to buffer the re-legislation?
Right.
Or you could just change the way the rules read and just say all legislation gets introduced to committee instead of waiting for a council meeting. Frank, well, you get aggravated. It's, it's annoying. I mean, they don't, that's not enough time to vote on legislation. Sorry.
Okay, I hear your point. Councilman Beatrice.
So can I just clarify one thing? So we have these, you guys want these set meetings, which it's nice to have that, but am I wrong in saying that we can call a meeting anytime? Doesn't have, if there's something that comes up that's that important, we don't have to wait? Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
We would always have the right.
Okay. So wouldn't it make sense, I agree, wouldn't it make sense, so I kind of agree with Councilperson Testa, Colosimo Testa, let me make sure I say that right. So maybe to have one on a Tuesday and then one on a Wednesday, but if we don't need it, you cancel it? I mean, it doesn't really make a difference. If you have it.
It'll give you time.
I mean, but like he said, it's gonna give you time, but that meeting on Wednesday is not, at four o'clock is not to vote on legislation that week. It would be for the following meeting. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
So I think we're, I think we're overthinking this a little bit. I mean, I, the easiest way would be to two four o'clock meetings of the days we have our meetings, and if there's something important, you have, you call the meeting at a different date, not where it's every Tuesday, every Monday, every Friday. Just my opinion.
May I, Mr. Chairman? I, I think that the, I mean, I know what you mean, Joe, but I think that for many of us who have complicated schedules like myself, having regular days is really important in terms of being able to schedule ourselves.
Well, you would have regular days, the same days as your meetings.
Right. I think it's important also to have at least one meeting where it, we're not constrained by the six o'clock time of the pre-conference meeting. So that's what I like about second and third Wednesdays, is that it's always on Wednesday. We've already, we're already blocking out Thursdays for council meetings. So Wednesdays are gonna work well for most people, but having one of them not be the council meeting means that if we have a really big thing that we really need to talk about for a long time, we're not going to have to stop at six P. M. in order to go into our pre-conference meeting. That's what I like about second and third at four thirty. And absolutely, you're right, we can always call another meeting if we need to, just as we can cancel a meeting if we work through enough stuff and we just don't need both meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Every piece of legislation that comes in front of us has the leeway of further discussions. We, we have been doing in the past, if most of us don't have our questions answered, of course, of course, we put in committee, remaining committee to our next meeting. In addition to that, every issue that gets in front of us, if it needs more discussion, if it needs less discussion. Some of us may be prepared to vote on it, some of us may not, but the majority does that, takes a direction on it. So if there's more questions that could be asked, of course, we're gonna remain in committee until the people in front of us can answer those questions. So each piece of legislation that's in front of us would have the merits to either continue the discussion in committee and remaining committee, or be voted on by the majority. So we don't know how much time we really need on a piece of legislation until it's in front of us. So by the rules that there are now, it gives us many options to go either way, but it depends on what the co-council feels to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, so where are you going with though? Are you?
I'm good for the second and third Wednesday. I'm good for that.
At four thirty, at four thirty.
Yeah. Any other discussion, Councilman DeBingo?
Yeah, you know, you have two proposals here. I could see Councilman Beatrice's point. We're gonna be here, but Councilman Colosimo Testa wants us to, if we do decide anything, give the clerk enough time to prepare, you know, legislation for the regular meeting. So I guess I could live with the second and third Wednesday at four thirty. I have no problem with that, 'cause the second Wednesday, we don't have a council meeting, and we can stay here till midnight to discuss legislation. It doesn't matter. So as long as we know, I'm fine with that. And we got a week off, you know, out of the four weeks out of the month. There was a, a free week if someone that has to travel, or someone runs a business and they has to go out of town, at least they could schedule it, you know, during that week. So I'm okay with the, the first proposition there, second and third Wednesday.
So, so as long, and I'm okay with that too, but when I, when you think about it now, so we're coming that second week on a Wednesday when we don't have a council meeting, really, if you sit back and look at it, don't you think it would make more sense if you had it on Tuesday? Kind of what, what the councilperson said? Because you're coming on that week that we don't have a meeting anyways. Okay? If you came on Tuesday, you can look about it, and maybe you won't have to wait till the following meeting. Maybe it's something small that we can discuss and vote on it right there. My thinking was, for maybe selfish reasons or whatever, to eliminate coming on that third week and just have two meetings unless it was something important. But as long as we're gonna all agree to come there, and I don't have a problem with it, why wouldn't we have it on Tuesday instead of Wednesday?
So you're saying the second Tuesday, and then the third Wednesday prior to it?
Yeah, it's basically the same thing.
No, 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 no.
You could even do it on the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday.
You're saying the first Tuesday, right?
I was saying the first and the third Tuesday.
Or the first.
That way we're on the same week, which is fine, and then you could always call a meeting in between the other week if needed. I mean, to me, that would make most sense.
Our council meetings aren't first and third Wednesdays?
Yes.
Okay. So if we had a committee meeting on the second week on Tuesday, and then on the third, the third week on the Wednesday.
Because literally, if you have it before the Tuesday, it's something that can be clarified.
Right. So I mean, it's the same thing.
Because you can't vote on legislation anyway, so it doesn't make a difference.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's the same, it's the same thing. It's just that you're not, on the, on the off Wednesday.
It's just a little more reasonable.
That's, I mean, I'd rather have them, like I said, you guys know how I feel. Obviously, we gotta do what you guys want. We're gonna have, we're gonna come here an extra Wednesday, which is fine. Might as well come on Tuesday to give us the time to think about it. That's all I'm saying. It doesn't make a difference, but it's just my.
Jose, Lacy, and Frank, you know, two days late.
Uh, Councilperson.
Can I also just suggest that we can change this in three months? This is all.
I'm never touching these rules over again.
Okay. Well, the, the other eight of us can change them in, in three months if we want, with or without, right? You know, we don't have to solve, completely solve this once and for all. Now, let's.
I, I, I want to figure out, my question now is, does Tuesday work?
Frank, it doesn't work because I can test it. It just didn't have any reason.
Third Tuesdays don't work for me.
You're here. How's this Tuesday hard working?
Third Tu, third Tuesdays don't work for me. I go to the Sequite Creek Basin Intermunicipal Commission.
So they're variables. One, the third Wednesday doesn't work for me. That Wednesday doesn't work for me.
Whatever, at the end of the day, it's not a big thing. It's a month.
I think Wednesday is my colleague's, I think it's better for Katie and her family also.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is.
I think you need to make a motion in a second, no matter what, the majority's gonna roll. So just wait for Wednesday's meeting tomorrow and put whatever data on it, and then go from there.
All right, I wanna make sure, I wanna. All right, folks, next is ordinance nine, which is amending the composition of police. And I'm gonna defer to Councilman DeBrongo for this discussion. Ordinance is outlined is sponsored by Councilwoman Colosimo Testa.
Councilman? I'm gonna need to be excused at five o'clock for about fifteen or twenty minutes. I have to go to a meeting next door. Okay?
All right, we're gonna get together on proposed ordinance number nine, amending the composition of the Bureau of Police for the City of Utica, New York. Right now, they're currently at a hundred and sixty-five members, and they want, Councilman Colosimo Testa is proposing twelve additional police officers for a total of one hundred and seventy-seven members of Utica Police Department. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to Councilman Testa. I think one concern, soon as I saw it, one concern, 'cause there are others in here for increases, you know, where and how are we gonna get the financing for it? So I think I'll, I'll turn the floor over to Councilman Testa and, and hopefully, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Colosimo Testa.
It could be a man too, you never know. All right, so how I wanted to kind of do this is first off, maybe start with the police department, kind of a little background, how your call volumes increased, and so forth, and then kind of jump to the fire department, and then kind of revert back to the actual increase on those line items. So if that's okay with you, can we start with something like that? Okay, great.
Now, we've approached the mayor well over a year ago. We noticed with all these criminal reforms, in addition to police reforms, it's added to our workload, whether it's raise the age, whether it's discovery. We're finding we have officers, especially to meet the discovery demands, that it's actually taking officers off the street for hours, sometimes hours at a time, make sure that they download all their files to District Attorney's Office so they can prosecute these people in a timely manner. But what's even more troubling, the need for this money, is the gun violence. We've seen over the last two years significant increases in gun violence. Last year alone, we had six homicides by shootings, but even more troubling, we had over two hundred and thirty-five calls for confirmed shots, fire calls. These are calls where they're actually shooting at people and houses and cars. So having said that, the problem we run into every year is the fact that during summertime, when our call volume is the highest, that's when we typically see a deficit in manpower. It could be for a number of reasons. We're allowed to fill our complement to the number that we have. The problem is they're in the police academy for six months, and then they have another three months of, of field officer training, training as well. So what we traditionally have seen over the last couple of years, and the need for the extra manpower, is that we're depleting or disbanding specialized units to go out and do the proactive police work, to go after the gun, known gun offenders. I don't want to do that this year. We even saw during COVID this year, when we were down twenty officers all at once. What did we do to make sure we had enough manpower to cover the basics, cause for volumes? We're depleting specialized units, those proactive units that go out and do the enforcement. Another key component is that this year we took down two major gun offenders, and we did it by working with federal and state entities. But when we have officers, they're sometimes tied to these units for six months at a time, or longer to do these cases. We're tying up two to four personnel again to do this. So we took down two major gun offenders. My concern going into this summer, what we're seeing already, is starting to see the peak of the next upcoming gun offenders. They're now see an opportunity to make themselves the next people in line. So the manpower would certainly help us, and you brought the question about how's it gonna be paid for? Well, the president came out with the American Recovery, Recovery Plan, in which police departments all over this country are using that funding for a three-year period to increase their police complement. It's paid by the federal government. That's how we would pay for our officers.
Chief, is there other grant opportunities that you have, not just through the ARPA funding, like through an actual, I mean, for example, like the firefighters have the SAG-A-R-A. Is there something, I mean, because that's, that's an actual saving to the taxpayers automatically, you know? So I would see something like an avenue that we can go.
They can't hear you.
Please. So I, I was just saying, is there actual funding other than, you know, using the ARPA funding that we could utilize in addition to that?
The ARPA fund is immediate. The other funding that used to be in place was called the program called COPS. I don't know, there's still grant money, still any for that? Last article I saw, there were, there were police agencies and representatives, elected officials asking for the federal government to expand, I think, or put their program back in place. So, but the immediate funding would be the ARPA money.
Right, right. Well, I noticed that, I know that they do pay those officers over the, over the three years, over the three-year timeframe. So just, just something that we could possibly look into.
All right, I, I have a question, Chief. Are we down manpower now? How many positions are we down that we have to fill?
Okay. Right now, we're down five. I'm expecting to be down two more due to retirements by the end of the month, which would be seven. And I'm expecting another retirement in March, which would be eight. So I'm gonna be eight down, down eight personnel. Last year wasn't too bad for us. We had four vacancies, or five vacancies. We may do with what we had, but again, I mean, every year it changes based on how many people, you got either resigning, retiring, terminated.
And you just had a civil service test, so you're gonna have some members, hopefully become police officers out of that, however many qualified?
They're in lateral transfers.
Okay, lateral transfers as well. Okay. So she's proposing twelve, and I know we could use some of the ARPA money. I know the mayor come out with some, to use the ARPA money to hire maybe five police officers, but that's not in this discussion right now. What this is discussion is, do we need twelve? And, and the average person, the average police officer, eighty thousand maybe a year by the time you pay their salary, the, the health benefits, the uniforms.
It changes depending how much time you have in the job. I mean, if you wanted to throw in everything from training.
From a new recruit.
Equipment, new guy, you're probably looking at well over ninety thousand dollars if you're including equipment and everything, fringe, FICA.
Yeah, yeah, all the.
Disability, I mean.
Yeah, payroll costs, yeah. Yeah. Now, I know that recently, I, I think one of the council members asked, through ARPA, ask you, Heather, through ARPA, where did the money get funded to, and what, what agencies received the money, like the zoo, two million, things of that nature? There was a one million dollars in there for gun violence for the Utica Police Department. Is that, some of that money been used already, or is this going towards new officers?
A little bit of both. So when this, when this all got started, and the Police Reform Commission was meeting, one of the things that they really isolated was cameras. So cameras is a good, probably about four hundred thousand dollars of putting those in, and we're well on our way of getting those installed. And so there's been a lot of, a lot of involvement with that. It was the mayor's intent to propose five, five police officers and pay for those for.
Included in that one million?
As a portion of it. I have numbers here if you'd like them. I have numbers.
It didn't say that they were hiring five. It said they were either gonna place it towards overtime, the possibility of new hires, and towards the gun violence legislation. So if you notice what Brian Thomas had said, so it was a breakdown of that. So it never said that they were actually, they were hiring five police officers.
Well, and the mayor's.
Well, at the time, and that's why, when I had proposed the legislation, there was no intent to ever hire the officers according to this funding.
That's inaccurate. We've been talking about, when we, a million dollars was put aside.
Correct.
As I said, it has evolved over many months. And when that money was allocated for that, the first thing we knew was we needed cameras. We had to go and do our due diligence to see how many police officers should we get with this funds, because we knew that after three years, that money would disappear. So we had to do our due diligence. As we've gone along, we've been meeting, we need every week to go over all of this. The, this five police officers, that legislation has been floating around, Chief, probably three months?
If not longer.
With, with the law department, because they had to do some research. That's when they discovered there was a little bit of a mistake between investigators and the patrolmen. And so we put together a whole big budget, and it's been worked on over three months. We have not come down. We have not come down, we haven't gone to E and A with it. Pardon? And we haven't gone to E and A with it. So I did prepare, I worked with the fire department and the police department and the controller's office to come down with a reasonable cost for five versus twelve, based on one police officer, so anybody can multiply the numbers. So that at least, as it relates to the numbers, we're all on the same page.
Right.
Right? So I'm happy to pass out of that.
Another question I have, I know we have our, um, sales taxes increased significantly, so we have some extra money in there. I know, once they approve marijuana dispensaries around the city, the city's going to get maybe three or four percent of that, the finances that, you know, that, whatever they're spending on that, uh, the marijuana. I think the, the, uh, state gets nine percent, the county gets one, and maybe we get three or four, I'm not, and so something like that. So, uh, we are going to get, obviously, some more money coming in. Can we afford adding twelve, as in your expert opinion, you're the budget director? Can we afford to add twelve police officers and possibly twelve firefighters at this time?
The question is, really, what is your best interest of it for? You can afford whatever you want, if you want to raise taxes, or buy other revenue streams, or cut our expenses. If, if you're looking to keep a zero, all things being equal, right now, and I think a council person reached out to several people in City Hall today as to what does one percent equal, it's about three hundred thousand dollars. I was looking at a, a revenue neutral to the general fund, and that's why I went hunting for the ARPA money. Over the past year, two weeks ago, the final rule came out for ARPA, the final rule. We weren't quite sure exactly if there was going to be any changes to it. So as it's evolved, um, I was looking for revenue neutral, so that it wouldn't affect it. And that's why I was looking to be on the list.
The grant funding wouldn't affect the budget for the first three years either, either. So that was another...
That would be...
And that would be saving the money through ARPA funding to be utilized for other, other resources. So that was kind of why the grant process actually came out. So when you look at, when you look at the actual numbers...
So for example, police overtime, okay, you're looking at two hundred thousand dollars budgeted, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars budgeted, and then about a hundred and twenty-five budgeted for the police department, excuse me, fire department. Savings on those just for overtime is probably about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This year alone, we over budgeted in our fire retirement line by five hundred and ninety-one thousand, and in the police line by four hundred and eight thousand dollars. So just in our budget year, this, just in this budget alone, you're probably looking at about one point five million dollars between fire overtime and, and police retirement and fire.
Hold on, hold on.
It's, it's right, right here.
We, we didn't finish the fiscal year, we didn't finish the fiscal year.
But you already know what your payment is to the budget would be.
You have, Heather, you want to respond to that, or?
Sure, I mean, there's, so we have two contracts, we actually have three, but we have two contracts that are several years in arrears. Right now, the fire department, as we stand today, is two years in arrears, and the police department is one. We have to build something into the retirement and, and we accrue back. So those numbers are going to change by the time we get through the end of the year. They're going, those expense numbers are going to increase. Number two, when it comes to overtime, most especially for the police department, and I will let the police department further speak to this. Majority of that overtime is not for first and second year of patrolmen. That's why we have give grants, they go out and do the stops. This is for investigators, CID, experienced personnel that are out there doing these investigations, okay? That overtime is not going to go away to make a higher addition to this officer. It's not a simple replacement. It's not about COVID. And, and Chief, Deputy Chief, would you like to kick in and, and agree or disagree with me?
Yeah, I mean, our overtime cannot be necessarily always projected. The biggest problem with our overtime, it depends what's going on. So if we have a shooting, yes, we're calling back multiple investigators, um, and command staff, um, to investigate that homicide. Because we find like any homicide, more resources, you throw it in early on, there's better chances of solving that case. So that is, it's just one example, uh, but also contractually, with our PBA, overtime, when we do have overtime programs, say if officers work the auditorium. It, it goes to the most senior officer, which sometimes, there, there, a lot of times, they're, they're paid at a higher rate because of their step increases, their salary.
Does that reimburse from the auditorium back to the city?
Yeah, however, they do reimburse us for overtime for that.
I know, councilperson Fran, you have the floor.
Well, I wanted to ask the question that, but I, I think Heather already answered it about that the overtime doesn't easily translate from simply hiring new police officers, doesn't necessarily wipe out all the overtime. So that already got addressed. I'd like to pivot a little bit. I worry that simply increasing the complement by twelve officers is, is kind of trying to put in a pushpin with a three-pound mallet, right? We've got more complicated problems that, that in the last year, or two years really, the police reform committee has been trying to address. So I'd like to hear, so a couple of things. I'd like to hear the chief talk about the recent recruiting that you had, where you had X number take the test, and then X number take the physical test, and the number kept dwindling. And the, the, um, the number of vacancies you have right, which now you say will be eight by the end of March, given some retirements. Our recent recruiting efforts are not going to fill those eight positions, correct?
Uh, I disagree.
Okay.
Because I think between the civil service list and lateral transfers, we have a very good chance of, uh, hiring for our complement.
So it's, okay, so it's the lateral transfers that are going to make up the difference from something else I had heard. That makes sense, okay.
I'll address your first question. This isn't just the Utica Police Department that's having a struggle with police recruiting. This is not only happening local, but it's also happening nationally. I mean, when you got the national news demonized in our profession, it's hire for young men and women to get interested in our profession. We tried multiple campaigns, we tried job fairs, we tried billboard science, we tried advertisers in news, making interviews, uh, going on social media. We tried every avenue of best practices that are out there.
Right.
The reality is, we, when we used to give a civil service test, we'd have anywhere between three to five hundred candidates. This year, we had only like ninety-three people sent in for our test. Which is higher than both the county and Rome's police department. And I reason, I mentioned those two departments, because again, they're all trying to hire the same, same pool of candidates, and we are around the same time.
Right.
So I can give you an example. I know in that county, they, they had a, invited sixty-five people to show up for their civil service list. Uh, twenty-five showed up, nine passed the physical agility test, so now I have a pool of nine candidates until their vacancies.
Right, right, right. So, I mean, that's one thing, I think it's, it's important to remember, that even if we were to increase the complement by twelve, you wouldn't magically be able to fill those positions. This is a, this is an ongoing hard issue that we've talked about in the council before. It's why the council voted to release the residency requirement after five years, et cetera, right? In order to try to relieve some of that difficulty in filling the, the positions. But the other question I want to ask is, in the midst of the various kinds of police reforms that we've been attempting, one of them, the way that I understand, the way I think about it, is trying to, to change how we, uh, how we answer service calls. So the crisis intervention team, and I'd love to hear you talk about how that's going, and how, what kind of potential that has. We've only just begun experimenting with it, and I'd like to hear how that's going, and how it might potentially, over time, relieve some of the burden on more sort of tradition, that, the kind of policing work that you always need a police officer to do. Versus the kind of recalls to, you know, service calls that other kinds of professionals can help you with.
Well, I'll say this much, I know crisis intervention teams were a big talk up during police reform. What people don't realize, social workers are used to working day hours, Monday through Friday, they don't work weekends, they don't work holidays. I know we've been working with the neighborhood center for months, trying to get that position filled, but we couldn't find any takers, because it required working some evening hours. And also, there's some residency, but some social workers be on the street, because now it's not a controlled environment like they normally do from an office. So having said that, we did find, we're lucky to find an outstanding young woman that was a social worker, that was paired up with a, you have a police officer on a full-time basis. They've been in, uh, the, the unit was created back in April of last year, and just some of the success stories. I get regular phone calls in my office from family members, mentally, mentally health, uh, mental ill, uh, individuals stating that the services that are provided by this unit. For example, we have a lot of great mental health services out there. The problem is, is getting all of them to collaborate to deal with an individual's problems. Sometimes they don't always talk together, they don't always communicate together. One of the beauties of this unit is that they're doing the follow-ups with all these organizations, and make sure that you're all, all on the same page and working together for treatment for that individual. The whole goal of this program is to try to reduce the amount of incarcerations of people with mental illness, rather, rather, and rather try to give them a treatment approach. We are seeing that it's working. Would I love to expand this unit? Absolutely. I think one of the prob, immediate problems that we have is that the funding, which is given us by the community foundation, it ends in April of this year. And if the, and again, we're, we're sparing the police officer. However, if the neighborhood center does not come up with the cost for their employee, this could potentially go away. Now, having said that, we've been working with Heather to see if we can use some of that ARPA money to help fund that, that program for another three years.
And in, in theory at least, if that CIT program, if you did manage to, you know, get over some of those hurdles that you just described, and grew that out a little bit, it is going to relieve your department of some service calls. Or it really, it's not quite, it's going to lessen the, the pressure, correct?
We're hoping that's the case. We, we've done some statistics year to date, and it's, we haven't really relieved the amount of calls for service mainly, because now we're using that unit and using officers to increase the, in a increasing homeless problem. And what people don't realize, when you have homeless problems, they're also tied in with substance abuse problems and mental health. So I think, because we're taking, you've seen the, the growth of homeless people, it's added to the call volume, so... But having talked, you know, you talked about earlier about magically filling positions, we don't magically fill them. What we basically do is, we have to very carefully hire these people, because you just don't want anybody, you know, going into public safety positions, because, uh, and there's, there's a lot of testing that goes on, and along the ways you lose standards, but, uh, I'm optimistic we can do it. I know that, uh, we've had, uh, as opposed to other years, a lot of experienced officers wanting to do lateral transfers into the department. We've done some studying of those people, they would be great hires.
Where are they coming from?
Uh, I don't want to say the agencies, because I'll, there's some agencies they don't know yet, and I'd rather tell them first.
Okay, Councilman Williamson.
Chief, how many you got, when you say that we're down... You say you're down eight, you said?
Eight. I will be down, down eight by end of November, or March, I'm sorry.
Does that include the two oh seven As?
No.
How many you have on two oh seven A status now? Out of that two oh, how many do you think are actually going to come back?
They're not going to come back.
And how many?
I have two right now.
You have two on two oh seven A, so you're going to be down actually ten? You're actually down ten, and you're paying for these people, but they're not coming back.
And you bring up a good point. Along the way, I mean, our jobs, they're dangerous. Anytime during the course of year, I have officers, and it doesn't get talked about much, they have officers, they're being assaulted in route periods of time.
Yes, so you're actually, you're actually down ten more than anything right now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And like you said, it, you could have seven the next year, or five the following year. I mean, you always had somebody on two oh seven A lines, right? You never had zero, since I've been on the common council, I have not seen a zero two oh seven A.
And another concern, and the deputy chief just, you know, was reminding me of this, and he's absolutely right. We did talk to the mayor months ago about this. Our other concern is that we have another eight people this August that can retire, and it's a very good chance we'll lose half of those. And tha, and that's what concerns me, because now you go in the, the hot summer months, that's when you see the rise in gunfire, that's when I need personnel the most. Now, to help try to alleviate those, some of those problems, we've been working with the Natty County Sheriff's Department, they've been great, they've been sending people down. But basically, it's us that know, know the gun offenders. It's us that's pretty much leading the charge. I know the governor gave a directive to the state police to come down here, help with gun violence, they've been here twice.
Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Muri.
Yeah, so, um, I just want to, I just want to run through, through numbers quick. So, um, Mark brought up a good point, so it would actually bring that number potentially from ten to eighteen, doomsday scenario, eighteen vacancies, uh, if, if all of those. That, that's not including the additional twelve that, uh, councilperson Colosseum Testa's suggesting.
No.
No, because even if we were to hire.
Right.
It would be in the police academy and be of no immediate use to us.
So in all, doomsday scenario, and we pass this, right, uh, that's thirty people.
Who's to say that we can't hire?
No, no, no.
I mean, I think our biggest, I think our biggest problem is, is that, you know, we talked about this as civil service.
Yeah, but thirty people?
No.
No.
If you had eighteen, it would be twelve, it would be twenty.
Delvin has the floor.
You know, I want to, I want to get...
As far as the other eight, in the summer, I wouldn't be able to hire them.
So let's take the eight out.
Once a year, it can be.
So ten plus twelve, right? So what were the numbers of, of the new recruiting process that you just had? How, how many applicants did we have? How many folks do you foresee are even eligible to be hired?
We had roughly somewhere between, I think it was ninety-four, ninety-five that took the class.
Okay.
I think there were seventy-five, seventy-six that passed it, and we got approximately fifty-three that will be attending.
Attending what?
Physical agility this weekend.
Now, as we all know, physically, that they're attending does not mean that they show up, right? So how many folks?
Well, in the past, we never reached out to see if to confirm, and we haven't confirmed that we're actually coming. So in the past, you invite the entire list, and you receive some no shows.
This year, just to plan appropriately for COVID, we, we scheduled in blocks, and we reached out to confirm through time block, and that's the number we got back that confirmed that they would be there this weekend.
Now, I've asked this, I don't have the email in front of me, but, um, in the past, I think I asked you for the past three or four years of, of how many folks you've actually hired. And, and I think the highest was at most eleven, if I'm correct?
I think it was fourteen.
Fourteen. So I guess my next question is, how has us overturning residency helped, not helped? What, what has been the impact there? I am concerned, to be honest, that we will increase the complement by twelve and not have the ability to fill those vacancies, that's one. And then tie up, um, our fiduciary responsibilities of budget, and still not have the ability to fill those vacancies.
To your question, I don't want to sneak in and afford twelve, this is reality. I don't want to find myself in a position like I was in two thousand and twelve, where we end up laying off these officers as our financial situation changes.
Right.
What I'm looking for is a reasonable number, I'd, you know, I'd be happy with, with an increase. I think the five that the mayor's proposal is reasonable.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilman, just as far as residency, that, that's helped us significantly with retention.
With retention.
But Chief, also...
Because we said, they still have to, they still, if you're a new recruit, you're in the city for ten years anyway, right? Is it ten, five, five?
But also, you would hire those twelve out of this academy.
Right.
You would have to hold another academy if you were to have an additional twelve officers.
Yes.
So you would, he would be hiring those twelve, or whatever, well, baby teams that he had.
I understand, let, let her speak.
I just, I just wanted to make the point to you, they would not hire those new twelve officers out of that academy, they most likely would have to host another academy.
But, but to me, that's, that, that's just deferring the problem off, if the problem is still hiring, would that, would the dynamics of that change within months? I, I don't, I don't foresee that.
Okay, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilperson ALO.
Sure, so when we look at twelve new police officers, what does that actually mean? Like, how many are on per shift? Would we see four more people out there? Like, what, how would that actually play out? Would you be able to paint a scenario like that?
I never counted on twelve. I, I had been talking to the mayor, we were talking about five. I think one of the things that we saw with raise the age was that the need to put another investigator in our juvenile division. We used to be able to charge sixteen, seventeen years as adults. We no longer had that ability now, so we're seeing that the caseload is doubling for our juvenile division investigators. So there was a plan to forget, you know, I think one of the officers in PRJ unit. The other unit I'd like to increase, if we can do it with the neighborhood center, is expanding the CIT unit. And the other three officers, if it was five, would be potentially go into uniform patrol. And like, like the deputy chief just was, was, we want to make sure we maintain our, what's that? We want to make sure we retain our crime prevention unit that goes out there, targets no gun, not known gun offenders, and address that way.
That's the main, our main focus is gun violence, and, and in order to, to keep this unit in place, we, this, this personnel is essential. Because those are the first ones to be pulled when we're short, or we, we have, you know.
I was looking at the, the give gun database, and are, is everything that's reported locally, like, reported through there? How does that work? It looks like, what I'm saying is, the numbers on the database look lower than what the numbers that you mentioned at the start of tonight's meeting.
What database you referring to?
It's the give gun violence database. Uh, it's the give gun violence database numbers on, um, I can go over this afterwards with you too. But everything then is reported with the gun shootings and with social workers? How does that work if this becomes like a mental health issue or medical? Is that HIPAA violation? Is that still all reported with a crime? Do you have social workers going out on these?
I just mental health calls.
Okay. I'm just mental health. So that's a separate one, not just, even if they overlap. And I guess my other question is, when it comes to recruiting, are there, so explain to me, like, when they go to the police academy, how, how many weeks is that?
It's twenty-six weeks.
And then is that paid throughout that yet?
They are paid. A base salary.
I, I've seen, I don't, and maybe you guys are already doing this, but I've seen, I know in Unica, obviously, our poverty rates were at thirty percent. You look at the top demographic, that's women ages twenty-five to thirty-four. And then it's mostly single age, like, single parent homes. Uh, I've seen a lot of, like, police academies offer daycare programs and those incentives. Do we do anything like that?
We, we currently have a couple, we have several youth programs. We deal with the youth because we find it, that the best influence you're going to have on our youth is if you get to them early.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the programs that we have, and it was actually recognized federally, was the Adopt a Cop program.
Oh, yeah.
With the preschool.
I'm saying, I want single moms to be cops. Or I want single moms to be cops or have a career opportunity in that. But that's where I was looking at, if there were incentives we could talk about that down the road.
We would welcome.
As recruiting goes, but, yeah. So I was mostly just wondering about the shifts. And, thank you.
Yep.
What's that? Councilman Beatrice, go ahead.
Forgive me for having to step out and if I'm going to ask a question that you already said, just, but from start to finish, what is the timeframe that you take this civil service test and we hit, you're on the street? What is the timeframe?
Well, if you, if you say we start taking the civil service test, you're looking at September. By the time we have the academy in place, you're looking at sometime in March per June. By the time they get out of the academy, you're looking at sometime late, uh, November, early December. But when they get out of the academy, uh, they're not able to ride along, ride alone by themselves. They have to be teamed up with a senior officer, we call him, field training officer. So now we have another.
But technically, at that point, they are a Unica police officer.
They're on the payroll.
They're on the payroll.
So from the time they go to being on the city payroll, be time, I mean, obviously, the first step is the civil service, correct?
Yes.
So how long is that?
The payroll or the time they take the test? The time they take tests is about fourteen months.
Over a year, chief?
About fourteen months.
Okay.
As far as getting paid, you get paid the day one of the academy.
Okay. But, so being actually a police officer is around.
The whole process from day one of taking the test is over, over a year, about fourteen, fifteen months.
About fourteen months. Okay. So my next, my next question to you is, um, I know we've talked, you're hiring eight, uh, council, councilperson Colasimo Testa is proposing twelve. You guys know I'm off for police and fire all the time. However, is there, and, and you've expressed to me, we've both talked, you have a problem with higher, we're struggling to hire police officers now. Is there, um, a way ever to waive the civil service test or that's?
It's all state requirements.
That's a state requirement. So that cannot be done?
It can unless the state does it.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm just asking you. I don't, I'm just.
No, there's elected officials, there's law enforcement officials that realize, there's a problem with civil service right now.
Right.
The way the system is in place. Matter of fact, the state police conveniently was able to break off of that and they offer civil service testing throughout the year online. We don't have that luxury. We have to wait for civil service to call a, ask for a police officer once a year and we're relying on that. And basically, the results of the examination is that we see, you know, once we get those results back, we start our multiple processes, whether it be, uh, the background, the physical agility tests, psychological testing, polygraphs, um.
So basically, the answer is you cannot waive the civil service test. Okay. So at this, at this time, would you say that hiring twenty police officers at one time would be a task that would almost be impossible?
It could be, but I'm not looking to hire twenty.
Well, twelve and eight.
I'm not looking to hire twelve or eight.
Let me, let me say one thing.
Okay. No, okay, because I, I mean.
I'm just, I'm working the council. I want a number that we can sustain going forward.
Right. Exactly. That's the key word, sustaining. Not using police officers through a grant and in four years and the grant runs out, you come, even they could tell you about attrition and this and that. I don't want to be a person on this council and I'll never be if I'm, if I'm ever, if I'm privileged to be here in three or four years, that I'm going to have to cut a police, a fire, a DPW. It's never happening in my time here. So what I'm asking you is, would it be better if we went over the course of, say, four years, five years, we hired three and three each year? Hire your back force, your eight, and then try to move it up? Now we can see, now we can see what we can afford in the budget, just the way she, she showed her numbers. She did great homework. Showed numbers that were, you know, overbudgeted here as long as it's in the budget. I do not personally, myself, do not think we should be using any CARES Act money, any kind of money that's around to pay for salaries. I think you should be using that money to do what we haven't done in the city for the last twenty years. Purchase equipment, fix buildings, take care of stuff. Let's, let's do some stuff for the residents. Dog park, skateboard park, that type, type of stuff. And let's move on with it. That's just my opinion.
I just want to say one thing to Councilman Beatrice. He did talk about lateral transfers. So if we get lateral transfers from other police departments, the process is almost immediate. Am I right?
It does.
Until they, they have to go through your UPD standards, your training, whatever. But it, it is, so if you hire a half a dozen out of the twelve or whatever through lateral transfers, that speeds up the process as well.
But I understand where you're coming from. It starts hiring three every year. I look at this, my need is now, I need to increase the complement. And if you look at that CARES Act money, the reality is, everybody knows there's a gun violence problem, not only here locally, it's national. And police departments all over this country are utilizing that money to hire police.
But chief, if you're able to hire your back force of eight that you mentioned and you went, let's just say, three, you are increasing it by eleven this year.
I'll be grateful with any.
Well, no, I'm, I know, I'm just, you know, you understand what I'm trying to say? I just don't want to see us hire five, okay, for four years and then all of a sudden we're going to get rid of five through, nobody's going to lose their job, but we're going to get rid of five because of retirements. What did we do five years from now or four years from now? You got the same number you started with. That's all, that's all.
Well, here's the thing. I don't know, even if you were to decrease, decrease the complement, there's always attrition through the years. We have people retiring. So I don't know if you would be laying off, you know, any officers.
Well, you wouldn't be laying them off. You wouldn't be rehiring them.
Right. And there's a need. There's a need.
Okay.
And I don't see that need going away. That's the reality.
Did, have we, and again, have we talked about the fire?
Not yet.
That's why we left police first.
Okay.
What's that?
I'm done.
Thank you. Councilman Muri, got the floor?
Yeah, I got a few questions. Um, where did the number twelve come from?
The twelve was the complement that, that it was back in two thousand and eleven. So had those positions not have been eliminated and there wasn't a budget crisis at the time, those police officers, those positions would still be inside the budget.
So that's from twenty.
And they, and no, we've never hired anything, anybody back. And that's, and that's the big thing, like, when, when that did happen, a lot of these departments had to.
Sure.
Get spread out throughout the department and that was where the number twelve came from.
All right. So, so here's what I am in terms of this discussion. I think that I've heard that, um, the chief wants to get to a reasonable number. I guess what I want to ask, because it's your legislation, right? Do you have intentions to amend it? Do you have intentions to say we want to get to twelve by twenty, twenty-six? What, what, what are you hearing in terms of the legislation?
I really haven't heard anything. I mean, my, my biggest thing, and I had talked to the chief prior to this, this is the legislation that I submitted. That, that's really all it came down to. And like I said, it was to get those numbers back to the complement that it was back in two thousand and eleven. Obviously, you heard the fire chief say that they went on an extra, what, five thousand calls compared to this year from last year? Or what was it, fifteen thousand total? Extra three thousand?
About two thousand.
About two thousand extra calls. I mean, so there definitely is an increase of, of calls for service that both police and fires have been doing. We can't see that the city's continuing to grow and that the city's doing this and building, we're building buildings that are gigantic and, you know, this, and the third, while offering pilot programs for people that are paying zero percent taxes basically. And they're still getting the services provided them for free. Yet the taxpayers who are actually footing the bill haven't seen an increase in tax, in their tax, in their, excuse me, in their complement or their tax base.
I just, I just want to, I, I, you know, the discussion is good. I just want to feel, pull where the council is. What is the legislative move for?
I don't mind your questioner because it is her legislation. So that's okay with me. But I think we're getting a little off point.
Sure.
We just want to, we want to see if we can afford the twelve or what can we afford?
Right. Or, or are you open to an amendment?
Can I say one thing? I, I, I dealt with eight city budgets.
Yeah.
Okay? I have never increased taxes on my own. Okay? It's always been something that I've had a cut, 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 cut. Our taxes have increased quite substantially over the past eleven years and yet our services have been, have been increased. Okay? A couple of things, when proposing this legislation that I had, that I had thought about, is there's a lot of calls for, like I said, calls for service and whatnot that we've, that we've increased. So I would like to, and what Joe said, that you can hire these guys gross right off the bat. First of all, if I can get three years' worth of grant funding, I'm not going to not take that funding. Okay? That's number one. One of the things that I was going to do when I originally submitted this legislation is actually make it contingent based on the fact that we actually got the grants. But just going through some of the budget numbers and seeing their debt services going to be lowered in the next few years, I think that that's something that the city could sustain. And that was just something that I get proposed. Now, my stuff in this.
So you want the council to consider this as is?
As is. I mean, like I said, I mean, the mayor could have made an amendment to the, to the, to my proposal. I mean, that wasn't, that wasn't that. But with, with that said, my job is to either cut the complement or increase the complement. Technically, we don't have any fiduciary responsibility to the city to even have to worry about that. If I think that the services are needed for inside the city, I can do that. The city spent sixty-four million dollars in ARPA funding and haven't come to me and asked me what I wanted to do with the funding. So, or, or this body. So, I mean, there's, there's two things and that's the way we got to look at it. Either this body is going to raise that complement to a number that they think is necessary or we're not.
Okay.
So, so we can, do you want to consider this?
Frankie, I do.
As is?
I, I think that we should consider it as is. And if somebody comes up with a better number, they think that they can amend it where this is something that, that would pass? I mean, I'm not, I'm not.
No, let's start the conversation, which is a good conversation.
Thank you.
Good?
Yeah, I'll let, yeah, yeah.
Councilman Miola.
Mr. Chairman, yes, the better number is five. It's agreed by the chief. The chief is comfortable with five, moving five ahead. It's not cost effective at this time to put twelve additional police officers in the future, chief. I know we'll work hard to get to that goal. Of course, I know you would love to have a police officer in every corner in the city streets, but we have to get on the cost effective part. And seeing that the cost effective part, we have some numbers here that were run by our budget director. Um, can Frankie, would it be okay to give her the floor so she can crunch the numbers to tell us what's going on?
Well, I can pass them out. I, I took the twelve. I have the one with the twelve and one with the five. They're basically the same, you just multiply them differently. Um, what I do want to mention, especially as it relates to the police officers, one thing we didn't talk about, they're going to need more cars, a couple of more cars. There's other things on the table. Um, so I'm just going to pass these out. They're pretty self-explanatory.
All right. Yeah, we'll take a look at them. It doesn't have to be right now. We'll take a look at them because I don't think we're going to make any decisions tonight. But we'll, we'll get them by the end or you could pass them around.
By the couple of cars that we can take.
Okay. You want?
I got it.
Councilman Williamson.
Hey, a question. I know, you know, I mentioned this before about the, kind of the steaming turd thing a few years back, but when the hospital's up and running and it goes for the fire as well, I mean, a lot, the hospital's going to cause more issues for the police and fire, you know, either by transports, more domestics, more of this, more of that, because it's going to be in our backyard now. Not in St. Luke's, you know, not other hospitals, but we're going to be a regional hospital. So with that said, if we did, okay with the twelve, that we have to hire all twelve this year. In other words, you just bring the complement back up to where it's one seventy-seven, to where it's supposed to be because you also have two, two oh seven As and this goes well as the fire, to bring them up full standard. But yeah, you hire the five right now, but if there's extra funding coming in, like you said, with the marijuana thing and everything else that comes into play, because once that hospital opens, you know, we're going to get more revenue, I would assume, as they say, that we can, you know, we can take care of that. So I think if we, uh, bring you back up to twelve and bring you guys back to where you belong and then you work it with the administration for the funding piece, but at least it's there.
Right.
And we don't have to worry about it down range. In other words, you go back up to twelve for the, whatever it is to be full complement, doesn't mean we have to fill those right now, but it's there. Because down range, when that hospital opens up, you know your calls are going to go up and as well as your calls. I mean, you only, you only got one zone car in that area. What happens to that zone car? I mean, you, you got issues going on at the hospital. That zone car is going to spend the, the day at the hospital?
There'll be a lot more activity down there.
Exactly. So with that said, if we, if we came up with the twelve, we brought it back up to normal range, doesn't mean we have to fill all twelve right now. I mean, it's there, it's there, ready for you because if things happen in three or four years, would increase revenue of all the stuff that's going on in the city, it should not be an issue.
It's hard to project what's going to happen with the hospitals, but you're talking, like you said, thousands more cars coming into the city.
Yes.
Um, the only thing I can think of is, I did think about the problems in the hospital. I know there's a program that New Harvard's been doing for a while where they're hiring officers off, off duty at overtime rate to work inside hospitals because they just can't keep on sending police cars to handle all the different problems that are going to happen in a major, you know, hospital complex.
So I mean, well, I mean, is that common knowledge to, you know, or not common knowledge, but is that, you know, we bring you guys up to one seventy-seven, but it's on your discretion as well as administration, what we can and cannot afford at that time and just bring everybody up to where they need to be? Because at the end of the day, we, we can put a complement of two hundred on there. Doesn't mean anything.
Right.
You know what I mean? It really doesn't mean anything. But we know we got to get there eventually because we got rid of them and we got more people coming into the city now. And in two years, it's going to get worse downtown. So if we bring up the complement, it doesn't mean we got to fill them funded wise, right? I mean.
I mean, it's a compliment. That's, that's contrarian. Once it, once it goes up, we have to meet that requirement. We have to do everything we can to hire those bodies. That, that's what you're directing us to do by increasing that.
Right. But we have a complement now. It's not though.
I know, but we only have an academy once a year. We do everything we can.
And that's what I'm saying. It takes about a year to get a police upper, you know, with the, the academy and then FTI, what, FTI?
FTO.
FTO and they go through that and then when they get comfortable enough, they go on their own and stuff. That's, that's a year process, right? Basically. So, I mean, down range, we, you know, as a common, you know, a lot of us aren't going to be here in, you know, three, four, or five years. We don't want the same thing to happen to what happened to that council back in two thousand and twelve. So we got to come up with some resolution because you're going to need your bodies as well as the fire department and, you know.
That's why having that three-year budget, you know, that three-year of that pre-funding is nice so that you, in three years, you can budget overtime in order to make sure that you get that.
But I think. But I think...
Councilman Williamson, you have the floor.
Yes, so increase of sales tax and everything else, because a lot of things are happening in Utica, a lot of things are happening. But I think it's the right thing to do as us to look downrange. I mean, if we can do it, we can swing it, and we can swing it, and we've just got to swing, what, seven people? Seven? If you got three, you got two 7As, right? You got two on there not coming back, right? And they're going against our complement now, right?
Yes.
So you're actually down 10. You're down 10 right now.
By the time the last person retires and...
Yeah, and then, of course, the fire, when we get to them, your list is longer, so... All right? So, all right, I mean, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you. I just want to, for clarification, Councilman Miola spoke to you, and you said that five is the number that you agreed to. Is that something that, because I heard you earlier saying that if you got 12, you could, you know, as those numbers dwindle down, you could put them inside different units? So, I mean, and that's just, I just want to clarify that...
I'd love to have 12.
Exactly.
I don't know if it's realistic, but I have been talking with the mayor. We talked about adding five. If that's a reasonable number the city could afford, I'd be more grateful to take it.
The city could afford, I mean, really, to do anything. You know what I mean? I mean, and that's something that, like I said, this body would have to actually talk to. The other thing that I, that I would never support the mayor's legislation, and the reason that I wouldn't support that is the fact that that sunset clause, with that sunset clause being in there. I mean, so you tell me that you would bring somebody for five years and then just get rid of them?
No, it'd be through attrition.
Through attrition. I get that, but then what's the point? The complement has never been increased. So technically, he's not doing anybody any favors, because the complement would still be at the original number.
I always look at it this way, sunset clause, it's probably not even needed to just... The common council always controls the complement.
Done.
Yep.
I just, very briefly, just want to address Councilman Williamson's claim that we could pass it, we could create whatever complement we want, and then leave it up to the administration as to whether to follow the law, is essentially, right? This is in ordinance. We're passing a law or not. We should pass the law that we reasonably expect them to make every effort to follow as quickly as possible, not sort of, I wouldn't expect us to pass in ordinance and then leave it up to their discretion as to whether, as to whether they're going to go ahead and fill all the positions that we added in relation to an increased complement. That just doesn't make sense as a way in general to think about the law and our relation to it and our relation to the administration. So I just wanted to point that out. I also think, I mean, of course, Councilman Williamson is right that the future could hold, the future may be that we need a lot more because of the hospital or because of whatever else. We're a growing community. We may need a larger complement on both forces for whatever reason, but I don't think that we need to increase the complement now in order to respond to a hypothetical future. We will, we increase the complement as we need it in the near future, not in, you know, a hypothetical long-term future. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Beatrice.
So, I'll say the same thing again. What we're talking, the reason, again, I am for increasing, I'm for doing it in layers, for the biggest reason is, we're talking police and fire right now, we're not talking about even the people who need more help than any of them. You've got 38 DPW workers, 38. That's who needs to get hired, 10 or 12. You know what? There's gun violence, but you know what? When people are, get accidents on the street because of problems, because roads can't be plowed and stuff can't be taken care of, when you're dead, you're dead, either way. So the people we need, that's what I'm concerned about. If we go through and do all this, what happens when we come to the next situation where we really need help? They, them, there's 39 people that work in our DPW. You've got 13 routes, that's 26 people. If it ever snows two days, three days in a row, okay? All right? I know. I'm just saying, my point, why I believe that we should do two or three a year for three years, build our complement on...
Point well taken, yes.
And go then. That's all, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarification purposes, so the 12 new guys that you would hire, you buy a police car for each of them?
No.
No. Okay, so then I'm just curious to know why there's a car for the people that are being hired? Like, that, to me, just doesn't make sense. And we could always talk about two to, two men. It says two car and fit out, that's 100, so you added an extra $104,000 for a car and fit out plus gas and repairs? Why aren't we adding the gas and repairs for the 12 people that we're hiring? It just doesn't make sense. But to that point, we always could go, we could always go two to a vehicle.
Let the budget director explain.
What's that?
Look at the sheet for the 12, it's right there.
Oh, I get that. I get that, but I'm just saying, we've never, we've never added, we've never added vehicles. So now we're attaching vehicles to increasing the complement as well.
You can't add 12 people.
So you can't have two people to a car?
And not have my car to drive.
Wasn't that something that we talked about, adding to, the chief, adding two people to a vehicle? For better protection?
For too many cars, I couldn't sustain it.
Well, we, I mean, we could. If you, if we, saying, just saying, if you had the additional 12 men, if you needed to put two people to a car.
If I had the 12, I probably had more uniformed, you would see occasionally two man cars.
I'm just saying, if we had to make it work, just to get these people back on the streets, don't tell me that we need to add a vehicle on top of it all. That's all I was saying. But if needed, you could put two people to a car.
We could.
Okay, thank you.
The chief was saying he couldn't sustain it, I mean...
Okay, is everybody, everybody okay with this meeting right now? You had all your questions answered?
And the mayor.
I think we should sit down. We don't have to have the chief and everybody in front of us. I think later on, what we'll do is, we'll get together again, and we'll sit down and crunch some numbers. But I do have a question for the budget director. Now, the rule of thumb, if it was a 1% tax increase, 280,000?
About 300, it's a little over.
Close to 300?
Yep.
Okay.
301,000.
So for every 1% that we go up, about 300,000, okay.
So what's proposed with the 12? Could potentially be an 8% tax increase? Nothing higher, nothing higher, nothing less.
Yeah, it's just something I just want everybody to realize, that other council people realize that, so if we do decide to make a really big move, and we might, we want to increase, we'll see, we'll see. We'll have a discussion ourselves. I think, I think the UPD has done it at this time. No other questions?
Can I just hear, what was that number again, though, for 12 and 8% tax increase?
That's what she said.
Roughly speaking.
Well, technically, if we...
You take the number and you divide by 300, so for the first year, if it's 2.5, you just divide by 300, that gets you to about 700.
Right, and that's without any grant funding or anything like that. So if you were to apply for the safer grant, that number would actually be zero for over three years, and then you, then you go ahead over the next three years and figure out how you would add that increase into the budget. But like I said, we just so happen to have a $3 million surplus this year.
Okay. UPD, thank you.
I just thank you for your consideration, that's all.
You're welcome, chief.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
I'm done. Can we take a, can we take a break?
You want to take five? We'll take five, and then we'll come back. I know you've been waiting, patient leave, and I appreciate that. Let's take five and come back.
This is number 10. It's amending the composition of the Bureau of Fire for the city of Utica, New York. Right now, their number is at 124, proposed by Councilman, Councilmember Colasimo Testa, to up the complement 12 to 136. I'd like Councilmember Colasimo Testa to start out with this legislation.
Point of order, just for me, for nine, we're keeping it in committee and having another meeting, right?
Yeah, I think that we just want to get the actual numbers.
Okay, I just want to make sure, so I know.
Yeah, at the end of this, we'll put them back in and then we'll have a private discussion.
Sam, I just want to say something because I saw them talking. If you look at police, I want to point something out, both police and fire. Fire is two years and a year, and police are one year and a year. So when you look at the number over, we'll take fire first, the 48, entry 48-862, that does not match the 53-393, because you have to add, I'm assuming, a 3% increase for each year. So if they're two years behind at 22, they're going to be three years behind at 23. So I took 48-862, multiplied by 1.03, took that, multiplied by 1.03, and then 1.03 again. So that's why those numbers don't match. That's why he explicitly put that there, and he did the same thing for police.
Right, and I understand that. That's why the civil service starting base salary was specifically what it was.
Yeah, I got those from these and mine as well.
Is the mayor going to fix these, or what are you going to do to contracts on this? Because, I mean, it's speculation, I mean, it's hard to do a budget when there's so much speculation, a year behind, two years behind.
As, just as I was telling you about retirement, right now, it looks like we're way under, but when we go to do our goal at the end of the year, it won't be. So it makes it very tough to budget.
Do you get those numbers from the state comptroller?
Yes.
He's the one that submits them, so you already kind of have an idea of what those numbers are.
And that's what the bill is, but it doesn't take into consideration contracts that are not, not.
No, and I, and I had understood that why that number was a little higher, which, I'm just saying.
No, those came right from his office.
You're at the floor, Sam.
Okay, very good. So, kind of just the same basis as we did with the police, I think we got a lot of questions out of the way for you, chief, so. But I definitely think that your department is a little different as far as what the needs are compared to the police department, but I think we can, at least we're all coming to the agreement that there is a need, at least the council lies, not necessarily from the administration.
Let me give you my opinion first. Obviously, I was a firefighter for 20 years, so I, I kind of know what the men and women go through on a daily basis when they're, when they're at work, especially in the cold weather in the winter. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's tough sledding out there at times, and lately, they've been very, very busy. And I know a couple weeks, two weeks ago, when we had our last council meeting, the chief expressed the, over 15,000 calls, you know, for the fire department alone, over a 365-day period, up over 2,000 calls from the previous, previous year. So, that, and dealing with COVID, and, and, you know, some of the members are being exposed, a lot of the members being exposed, you know, it was, it was a pretty tough year, and it's, it's continued to be a tough year for the fire department. And I know a councilperson, Testa, wanted to look at increasing the complement. I, I think it's time, so hopefully, we can come up with a number. If it's 12, it's 12, if it's less than that, we'll find out. But I think what we're going to do is, if anybody has any questions for the chief, I'll open the floor to the council, and then we'll go from there in, in pretty much the same type of meeting that was, that was done prior with the UPD, so.
Sam, let's talk about the council.
Counsel.
Hey, chief, just like I asked the chief, how many 207s, was it Charlie's for you guys?
No, 207As.
It's A for us, C for them.
C for them. So how many 207As do you have on, and how many, not going to probably come back, because they've been on there for quite a long time?
Yeah, so currently, we have five on a long-term 207A. I believe that we're going to be adding a sixth to that in the next couple of months. In addition to that, we have two other members with serious on-duty injuries that they are currently recovering from.
So, you know, and that goes against the complement too, and we're paying full benefits and salaries to these people on long-term, and if they came off, of course, that'd be a savings, right, Heather, of course, if they came off. And, so, I mean, that's a future thing that I kind of discussed before with Frank about putting legislation and somehow getting up to the state level, and with Frank over here to, you know, try to get those off after two or three years instead of, I mean, you got people on there, been there for 10 years.
Correct.
That's a long time being on a.
And for some of the councilmembers that don't know, 207A is the department injury, where they've got injured, they're unable to perform firefighter duties, so the city has declared them inactive, and they cannot perform. So what they do is they go to the state, and the state will, the doctors will look at them and, and, and find out if they're eligible to get 207A, which is the state will pay three-quarters of their pay, and the city would pay one-quarter of the pay. But since the state is not acting on this, and a couple, one of the members, I think, is over 10 years old, they're not acting on granting them disability, so the city is stuck with paying full benefits and salaries and raises and whatever have you for these persons that can't perform. It's really not, it's out of their hands as well, you know, firefighter duties, you know, it's very, very strenuous, very, you know, on your body, you know, you just wear yourself down, and they just can't, they just can't perform duties of the fire department. So, so that's why there's a, there's five out, you said there may be a sixth one out, so.
But you got to add that.
Councilman Ramsen wants to, maybe, for us to send a letter to the state, and maybe take a look at these cases again, and maybe we can get, get them to, hopefully, get them out of disability.
It's going to be the assembly to put on, it's going to be the assembly to put on there, but in all actuality, you're actually down more than what you're showing here because of those people.
Yeah, because of them, I just had another member submit retirement papers effective on Monday, so we have one open slot right now, we'll have a second open slot, plus the...
And your next academy is when?
Uh, it'll be starting in April, but one of the issues is right now is that we've exhausted the current list. We have a TAST on order that'll be given March 19th, the last day to sign up, if anyone's interested, is February 9th. We're trying to get people to sign up, but much like the police department and fire departments across the nation, we're having trouble getting candidates to even sign up and take the exam.
So if you, if you were brought back up to 12 on this, and with those 207A, or Charlie's As, then, right now, you're down 18, but if you got to 12, that would...
We're not down 18, no. We're down, we're, we're at 124, we're at 119 right now, and then with the two additional vacancies, we'll be at 117.
Yeah, but the 207s are, they're not used anymore.
Correct, correct.
So you're actually down those as well.
Right, they're not on the line, so.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Would they use the extra help? No doubt.
I guess one of the things I, I need to explain, though, is the makeup of the fire department. So, we have a minimum staffing clause, all right? So the minimum staffing allows us to keep the six fire stations open that currently respond to calls throughout the city. There are the neighborhood fire stations, that's, you know, 23 is the number. So, obviously, we have seven support personnel. The support personnel, I'm saying, is the chief, assistant chief, chief fire marshal, the fire marshal, two training captains, I'm sorry, eight support personnel, and the assistant maintenance superintendent. Everybody else is assigned to firefighting duty. So the, each shift, you know, four out of the, or three out of the four shifts, we're split up into four different shifts. So three out of the four shifts are starting one person down on a daily basis, one of the shifts is starting two people down because of the 207As. So each day, to meet that minimum staffing, even if we have sick leave use, vacation time, compensation time, we start even more. And one of the unique things about the fire department is because we have minimum staffing to keep firehouses open and keep our apparatus responding to calls, is that we have to back those positions. So that's where some of the cost comes into play when it comes to the long-term 207As, is that not only are we paying their salary, and rightfully so, I mean, these 207As, they've, they've been injured at the line of duty, they've suffered serious life-altering injuries, we maintain them, but one of the problems with that is that we have to replace them on a daily basis, so that, that causes some of the overtime creep that we see every year.
All set?
All set.
So, I just got a question on this, 207As that you call them. So why, like, why doesn't the New York State Workman's Compensation, like, take care of it? Why is it, why is the city, when, when you're, is that just something in their fireman contracts, or why is that? Like, like, for example, in the private sector, you, you went out, in my company, you went out. Company might have paid you six months, but then after that, compensation, you know...
Fire and police is different in the state.
Okay, so that's what it, okay, so there's no, if it was, if it's a DPW worker that gets hurt like that?
It's workers' comp.
It's workers' comp, but fire and police is different. Okay, okay, that's, okay, thank you.
Chief, just very quickly, can you talk about, like, who wanted to go?
No, I think you're next.
Oh, okay.
Councilman Mueller.
Okay, so very briefly, can, can you talk about the minimum manning clause? Like, what does that do for firehouses if you do have extra staffing, for example, South Utica with the pump truck and so on and so forth? So if you could touch base with that, like, how those services are actually affected on a daily basis for certain areas inside the city?
Sure. So minimum staffing obviously keeps the six firehouses that we currently have open. When we get extra staff throughout the, the year, there's times that we're, we're going to have more people available due to changes in vacation time and no sick leave use. As we go up, we increase the daily staffing. And so, in South Utica, for instance, in 2012, when we got cut, we used to run a, called it a tactical unit, but for lack of better terms, a rescue truck that would respond to the majority of medical emergencies in that district, and in a close by district, also provided water to South Utica at the time. You know, so with extra personnel, we would keep that, that tactical unit open. Since that has gone away, the minimum personnel in South Utica is three. You know, on occasion, we have days that we're able to staff at four in South Utica, we have days that we are able to staff at five, that opens the rescue truck, because when we have four staffing, they all respond on the same apparatus. When we have five staffing, they're, we're able to split those apparatus and provide a little more service. When we have three extra a day, we can put an engine in service which provides water to South Utica and to other sections of Corn Hill and West Utica.
Can you explain, like, what water means?
Okay, yeah, so, obviously, we have fire trucks, fire engines, the engines carry water. Their main job is to provide fire suppression. When they arrive at a scene, they pull hoses and they go inside the fire and put it out. So that's one of the key components of what we do. And, but, both the truck and the engine have very specific job responsibilities that are extremely important to public safety. The truck companies, those are the guys that are going through the windows, up the ladders, and rescuing people out of the buildings. They're integral to the operation and to what we do, they place ladders, they open up roofs, they ventilate buildings, they search the building, which is really their top priority on everything they go to.
Very good. Any other question I have, as far as high rises go inside the city, like, what, 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 do we see an issue, oh, sorry, do we see an issue with the number of high rises that are being built inside the city as far as being able to manage them, and how could this extra support staff help in, in that regard, if any?
You know, high-rise fires are an extremely challenging environment that, that we, we do have to respond to. So the city of Utica, and also according to New York State Code, is any high rise considered anything over four stories within your municipality? We've identified all those structures. FPA recommends a minimum of 28 firefighters respond to those fires initially, in the initial environment. I think that we, anybody that read about the fire in the Bronx last week in New York City, they realized that, you know, we have similar style buildings that provide challenge to us. They're difficult to manage, they're difficult to stay out of. Just take an example, two years ago, when 100 Rucker Street had a serious significant fire at five o'clock in the morning in August, I believe it was August of 19, I'm not exactly sure, but, you know, our firefighters had to extinguish the fire, and they also had to simultaneously search seven floors above that fire, answer calls to rescue people, where they had to remove people from the buildings, some people had to stay in place, do smoke conditions, but they are challenging and they are labor-intensive, so you immediately, when you have a fire such as that, you run out of resources right away. We don't have enough resources when it comes to that, that's typical style of fire. Typically, most departments in the United States don't have enough resources when it comes to that style of fire, just due to, whether it's the conditions of the building, whether there's no sprinkler systems, and things of that nature.
And I think, I think even so, you saw with the Charles Town Mall, not necessarily a high rise, but the number of personnel that had to respond to that call as well. Now, the one thing that I, I think is unique about your department, and it's even similar to the police department, the police department can open up different divisions, so on and so forth, to help combat violence inside the city. What I find unique about your department as well is that you guys also have a correlation when it comes to codes as well. One of the meetings that we have tomorrow is to talk about the fire and codes inspections inside the city. So I think that definitely, to this advantage, it doesn't just help from the fire side, it also helps with the codes component of, of it as well. So, and even response with ambulance services and so, so on and so forth. So I definitely think, even with the increase of the fire department, that there is a potential of revenue increases for the city as well. So, just to keep that at mind, you know, and if you don't mind, would you mind touching base on, on your ambulance response and how that affects the city budget?
Okay, in 2021, it's our, obviously, we just completed that year, we transported 7,104, I'm sorry, 7,101 transports. Our normal cost of, our average cost of reimbursement is about $390 a call for ambulance transport right now. It was definitely, I, I believe that we contributed significantly.
You know, the one thing I never understood about the budget is that if you took away that ambulance service, the city would be $2 million less in revenues that they would receive from the city. And I always thought that that should have been counterparted inside the fire department's budget, because it is a revenue source. With that said, do you think with an increase with personnel, that there could be a possible increase for services that the city could provide through transports?
You know, we really have to examine our deployment on that. You know, one of the issues that we have is, you know, we're running out of room as far as, even with additional staff, we can, we can find places to put them, but, you know, somewhere a firehouse is...
Like a new, like a new hospital?
What's that?
Like a new hospital.
A new hospital, yeah. You know, one of the things about the hospitals, though, is that both St. Elizabeth and St. Luke's, we respond to both currently right now. So, you know, one of the unique things about St. Luke's is that we only respond to the building, though we don't respond to issues in the parking lot and so forth, but we do respond to those buildings currently.
Right, and we save the city, the, well, New Hartford, a significant amount of money because we do offer, I can't remember, it was, and Chief Brooks had brought this up prior to that, since he's in the audience, what, what, what do we save, I think it's the town of New Hartford, for, I think it's in, for insurance purposes, because we're rated fire department? So if you could just touch base on that, because I kind of forgot, and I, in case anybody asked me, I wanted to be able to explain.
You're a part of that insurance rating organization, ISO?
Yep, yeah, ISO rating, yep.
It's your fire insurance, and that's the rates that the umbrella insurance companies will use to charge you for fire insurance, and then given your, right now, the fire department is a Class II organization, one of the few in New York State that are a Class II organization. Obviously, we always got our eye on that Class I certification, which would again contribute to lowering the overall insurance rates within the city.
All set?
I think, for now.
Councilman Mueller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's no doubt that, I believe that every firefighter, when needed, would enter a building no matter what, even the chief. He'd get in there to save anybody's life, so having any firefighter, or chief, or lieutenant, or whoever it might be, at a fire, you guys all work together to get that fire out, to make sure that nobody gets hurt. In addition to that, I understand that it's about fire prevention, so you're actually working yourself out of a job, to be honest with you.
We're one of the unique fields that spends as much time trying to prevent...
Fires?
Yep.
Time for people getting hurt, trying to make sure that nobody gets injured by a fire, or a cause of a fire.
Yes, yes.
In addition to that, I do believe that we are working with the administration on a safer grant to increase your complement at this time. Is that true, chief?
We've had our eye on a safer grant, but it's, we have to get a number.
Okay.
On that.
So the number is, depends on the amount that we're using, utilizing with the safety grant at this time, and it's, it's, we're negotiating what we could use and what we can't use for the actual number of firemen that we can add to the complement. Is that correct, chief?
Yeah, so, and, and again, I'm going to echo what Chief Williams said before, you know, one of my concerns is long-term, being able to keep those positions long-term.
Absolutely.
And, you know, deciding what a number that everyone's comfortable in, and the sustainability in four or five years. You know, historically, my father was on the fire department, he was appointed in 1973, there was 256 firemen. 1976, they were cut to 220.
You're doing your job, chief, fire prevention. You're doing your job.
1986, 181, 139, 130, 124. So we've seen, we've seen cuts, I've seen cuts in my career. You know, in 2012, I didn't envy anyone's position at that time, when we were looking at layoffs, and I certainly don't want to be put in that position long-term. And sustainability should be one of the key things that we focus on for any number that we apply for.
So at this time, we're in discussions with the administration on the safer grant and furthering the complement. Is that correct, sir?
It is. However, there's a short, very short time period to apply for safer.
Thank you, chief.
I think you just might answer my question. What is the cutoff date for this grant to be granted, I guess?
The, the application period ends, I believe, February 4th. It just came out January 3rd. It was kind of announced.
And when will we know if, if we applied for that? You know, we applied for it, when will we know that we received the grant?
We have not applied for that yet.
Oh, we have not?
No, we have not.
Oh, so, the big man upstairs says, "We're working on it." Well, I don't know about that.
Well, I am, I am.
I don't know about that, because, wait, 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 wait.
Yeah.
When, when he called me, and he said, "I'm going to come out with something with the police department, five members," okay, and then my first question is, "What are we going to do with the fire department?" And he says, "We have a grant coming, safer grant coming, but we don't know if we have that. We don't know if we have that grant coming. We don't know if we're going to award of that grant. It's all, right now, it's just speculation that we may be able to get that grant." So we have to take that into consideration, counsel, and please, I mean, we do need the manpower there, and, and I'm going to stick up for my firefighters, and I just want everybody to realize that. So it may be there, I'm hoping it's there, this way, it saves the taxpayers money, we could use that money for the, you know, from the grant, that would pay for some of these jobs for, I believe, three to five years. So that, that would be, that would be great if we could really push forward and get this thing approved. Heather, go ahead.
So I just, I want to be clear, because you said the mayor wasn't working on it.
You have to talk a little louder, because I...
You said the mayor wasn't working on it. He has been, and in fact, he asked the chief to hire a grant writer, and I think about three months ago, but we were waiting for the actual day that the grant was ever going to come out. We've been waiting, we didn't know, we heard, we didn't know. And so I know that he's been in contact with someone. One of the criteria, I haven't seen the, the guidelines, but the chief has mentioned to me, one of the guidelines, one of the guidelines will be that whoever we hire within the grant, we must keep in perpetuity. Is that correct?
I believe there's a five-year performance on that. You know...
Five-year performance of what, I'm sorry?
You have to keep the employee for five years.
Okay.
So that's 100, the safer grant would offer 100% funding for three years.
Which is, we are going for two, two years, you're right.
Yeah, well, wait, wait, let, let the chief talk, and before we, go ahead.
Yeah, so the safer grant would offer 100% reimbursement for the basic cost of the employer for three years. So that would be base salary and benefits, doesn't include any overtime.
For how many, how many, what's the complement?
It, it, the complement, the number has really got to be decided by the council.
And that's what the grant is for, but the grant is, whatever the council decides, that's what the grant would write.
That's what they would write. We would need the council's support.
But the question is about, this grant writer was for the safer act, I mean, for the...
Yep.
Safe act alone?
Safer grant, yes.
Safer grant.
But the police department has a grant writer on staff, right?
Well, they, they...
They didn't fill that position yet, I don't think.
But they would have a staff, a grant person on staff.
Yeah, they, they do have someone that, that applies for small grants, yes, they do, they do. But it's been, it's been our, our experience on some of these more specified grants, when But it's been, it's been our, our experience on some of these more specified grants when it comes to public safety, that you get someone who's very experienced in writing them. It's not just about writing, oh, we had this many calls, you've really got to sell yourself as to what the need is.
Correct.
Why, why?
Wait, 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 Delvin has the floor.
But the fire department doesn't have to have full-time like the police department has?
We do not, no.
At least budgeted or, or. I want to ask you a question, Mike.
Could you speak into the mic?
Yes, thank you. I forgot about that. We're live, live on Saturday Night Live. Okay, all right. So we're down five people, right?
Correct. That are on long-term 207A.
We have one vacancy, right?
We will soon have two vacancies.
Two vacancies.
Effective on that.
You've hired eight people in the last three years.
Correct.
Now, you, the average person, you said it's about 25 years of service, right, before they retire?
Across the.
Give or take.
Yeah, over the last, over the last 20 years, I believe, one or so of our personnel have averaged about 25.
25 years. 19 folks are touching 20 years this year.
Correct.
Seven folks will reach the minimum of retirement in 2022.
Correct.
Nine folks will reach the minimum retirement in 2023.
Correct.
And you have five on 207A?
Yep, and we have 20, around 24 personnel that have over 20 years that have reached a system retirement age, so they can all retire at any given time.
In your estimation, how many folks you think retire in the next two or three years?
Next two or three years. Tough to quantify.
But does that depend on the contract? I think that's a good point. Does it depend on the contract?
Sure it does. Yeah, yeah. Contract could definitely.
How benefits you know they're going to be out the door? So, so, but in your estimation, how many folks do you, you think would retire in the next two to three years?
I'm going to be looking somewhere around 10.
This is going to cost us 1.2 million? The 12?
Is that what we originally talked? I don't have my numbers in front of me, so.
1.1.
Oh, with the cost of the day added.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, 1.3, yeah.
And, and, and this is, this is in no way me asking a question to dismerit the work that you've done. We've heard a narrative from the police department, narrative from the police department was that the increase of their complement would, you know, mitigate gun violence, deter crime, on and on and on. I, I would want to hear, right, how with the 12 restorational services, right, that I do believe that we need to restore services with the fire department. Where do you see that increase in services for the year? Like what, what, what does the need, how would you use that additional 12 in the fire department? Would it be making sure response times are good, increasing the EMS and all of those things? How, how would that 12 impact the fire department?
Well, I, I think it really.
And forgive me if that, I'm not trying to be offensive in that question, I just, we heard.
It's a good question.
No, no, it's a, it's a very valid question. I think that, you know, one of the, one of the big issues that we have is that we have a fire station, Station 7, that does 11,000 calls a year. They're, they're responding to multiple transports a day. There is a burnout factor. It's 40, they averages, they average about 42 calls, the shift out of there. We would increase fire protection, we'd add additional personnel to that station on a daily basis. The engine would be in service all the time. Currently, with staffing of six, we cross-staff between the engine and two ambulances. So whenever we have two EMS calls at once, which is, which is on a regular basis, we lose that engine at the time. Engines are truly the backbone of your fire protection fleet. Having that engine in service, it would place it first due to the downtown hospital, places it first due to South Utica, certainly covers Caron Hill.
Yeah.
And a, a big chunk of West of Genesee Street, between Genesee Street and Materiel, it's, it's there first.
The police talked about a reasonable number, and I'm sure that, you know, like you said, you're trying to get to a number. What, what in your estimation would be that reasonable number? The mayor, for the police propose five, is that a reasonable number for you, six, seven? What, what for you would be that reasonable number?
Well, you know, the, I call what Councilman Williamson was speaking to, to just get us back to even, you'd have to cover the 207As. To just, and that would add, you know, our five personnel. So that, that, to just get us back to our daily staffing, which, you know, it, it has a, it has some merit to that, you know. Certainly cut down, and some overtime for the fire department, but I can't quantify those numbers because we don't have them, because we haven't seen that.
And the overtime is a little bit different in the fire department versus the police department.
Correct.
Who, who's involved with, with getting to that number? Are, are unions involved, are, who, who is involved in getting to, to that number?
Which number are we talking about? Replacement time, or are we talking about just overall?
Comp, comp, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I would definitely say the union, apparently have a.
Do they currently? I'm, I'm talking about that number for the, I'm talking about the number of the complement for, for this right now.
Yeah, it's a council, it's a council decision.
Right.
So, I mean, when it was reduced years ago, it was simply a budgetary function, we had a choice, raising tax, taxes, multiple, you know, double-digit, double-digit.
Right.
Or cutting, and, and that council at that time made a decision, a concerted decision, which now brings us to today where we have a little bit of a surplus, right? If that hadn't happened, you could raise taxes, you can easily, you will, if you, if you do this, you'll raise taxes, and that's okay, I mean, if that's what you want to do. But it's, it's this balance of what is the need, of this risk reward, of what do we need, and the definition of what you believe we need and what he may believe we need. Any one of us is going to be very different, and just trying to get to that, what is the reasonable number?
Well, let me add a follow-up to that. So, I don't know to what extent the police department is a revenue generator or a cost-saving agency, right? But I do get the essence that the Utica Fire Department, given the work that you all do in the emergency medical services, generates revenue or, and saves the city in finances. Do, do you have a number for how much revenue the fire department generates or how much you have saved the city in terms of finances?
Well, we know how much.
I know that you all sauce bill, right, with the ambulance.
Yeah, we know, we know how much the revenue is. The revenue number is not a good number when you look at it, and let me tell you why. I'm going to speak.
What's in the budget, 2 million?
It is, but I, I want to, I want to explain something.
Okay.
Because that number is artificially low, artificially low. Do you know why? Because the majority of people that we service, our cost is more than what we get in that revenue. The chief mentioned $300. The majority of our revenues are not for private pays like you and me, they're for the poor. And so when Medicaid pays or Medicare, often that number's 300. We could have two men and the ambulance there for several hours, and when you start looking at the cost of that, and we're only getting 300. That's when, and I, someone brought up the transport, I will get out and work with Captain Tarasano, Captain Tarasano, and brush out that memo on transports that we had a couple of years ago. But getting back to my point, just the budget says 2, 2 million, that's what we're getting. That's not what we're charging for spending. Right, well, no, I, what we're charging, we're actually charging a great deal more, but we have to write them off. So that number.
But even right now, it's 2 million.
Yeah, it's like 2.3, 2.2, 2.3, but, but we're not, we're actually, there's more revenue if you were to book the whole thing, but we're just writing it off because we can't collect it, we're not at liberty to collect it. How much are we spending to get that to? I don't have that number.
Can I, can I go?
So, I'm, I'm good, I'm good.
Well, I, I think to, to that point, I mean, we still are providing residents inside the city with a valuable service. So maybe they couldn't afford an actual private transport that the city's actually providing them. So if it saves one life, I think that that's worth any cost measure that we could.
I have to agree with you.
No, and I saw, first of all, I saw you getting your point.
Artificially low.
I, I understood after you explained that, but I just wanted to make that point that, you know, with that said and done, it's still a service that the city provides. The other thing that I, I was very concerned about, in as far, as far as the negotiations with the administration when it comes to providing an increase to the complement with inside the common council. At the end of the day, the common council is the only person that could function to change the complement of the fire department and police department. It's one of our only powers that we have. We don't have budgetary powers, we don't, unless it's budget season, we can, you know, add to a line as long as we remove it from a line. So technically, this is the only power as a body that we actually have in regards to the police and the fire department. With that said, and I understand that there's a timeframe, to me, is like, like what happened with the police department, the administration saying, "Here's a number that I have for you," kind of like what I did, right? I put the number 12 out, and like I said, I was originally going to put a contingent that the safer grant was awarded through the number 12, right? First three years, if we can get that paid for, but to me, why not do it, especially if we have to increase the fire services, we're talking about increasing the fire services inside the city. The second component to that was, if that was the case, I would hope that the city would have brought something to the common council and said, "Listen, contingent that we get this grant approval, you have to increase the complement even before that we can apply for a grant." Because what would be the point in applying for a grant if the council was never going to increase the complement? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I, I think that with, with this being done, whether it's for the police department or fire departments, the first time, and I, the nine years or what, eight years that I've been on the council, that we've actually ever talked about increasing either complement. With that said, the fire department has never had an increase, or the police department for that matter, in any of their, in any of the services. We did one, but that was to get a firefighter back for the EMT coordinator. So I think that, you know, to be able to even talk about this is something that I'm not going to stifle if the, if you can get any guys towards your service. And I know that the more guys that you get, the more services that the city could provide. But with that said, I think that we have to, as a council, realize that we're the authoritative body over increasing or decreasing the complement, and that if we, we are to do it, then we need, you know, to let us know what's actually going on, you know, and that's it.
Right. The question I have, if we increase the complement, obviously you said you had one or two that are going to retire, and we really don't have a list right now, the civil service list, correct?
So we hired three people on, out of city resident, or the non-city resident list. We've exhausted that list, we would have to re-claim this.
So if we were to increase, let's say half a dozen, six people, we're not going to be able to put them aboard until maybe the fall?
I, I'd say August.
Because of the fire academy, maybe in April, be too short a time.
Yep.
So effective, maybe August, whatever.
Yep. So, one of the plans is, is after we administer the civil service test, we're going to give the physical fitness test in April, before that test even comes back. So when that test does come back, we already have the physical fitness test taken care of, the number ready to start background checks, and get the candidates prepared and ready to go for the academy.
Okay.
We would also restart the academy a little bit earlier, we traditionally try to start it towards the end of August, we try to start early at least.
Anything, Councilman Mueller?
So Chief, with the process with safer grant, do you need anything from the council to continue your work on it?
I, let me try. I can't answer really well.
Can I just, because I know you weren't sure, because I didn't know it came out January 3rd, but do, does the council, before the grant is applied for, does the council have to increase the complement or?
Have a request to increase the complement.
Well, it actually coincides, because you, you sent an approval or resolution requesting that the safer grant get approved.
I'm just, I don't know if it's the same.
With the amendment of the council, it had to get approved. It's almost like a contingency basis, so to speak.
Right, it's almost the same right now.
Right, I can't give you 100% of the right answer on that.
So we have to find out the answer to the grant writer and what process the council needs to take?
Or literal transfers, like the police department talked to. I mean, you could obviously.
I'm all set, Mr. Councilman, thank you for, thank you.
Councilman Williamson.
Chief, how close are we getting in settling this contract? I know you're two years in arrears, and it's kind of hard, you know, to deal with something like that until your contract gets done too. You know, because it's, you know, it's going to be money involved an extra two years behind. I mean, do we see any, anything coming with this budget director? I mean, we're coming to an end of this because.
Is there money put aside? In case?
I thought we did that last year with the budget, to have money aside for that reason.
Put aside for past years. That's all I really, I know that negotiating team has reached out, they were looking at some dates. I know the fire department has been, you know, has been reaching out to our negotiators too, so I'm not part of that negotiating team, but it would help my budget if we had a, you know.
Well, I mean, we have the funding set aside for that purpose, right? Because we did talk about that last year.
For past years, yeah.
Two years.
That's why, that's why when we, when we did have a two-year contract that was approved earlier in the year, the retros were paid out and didn't affect this grant. So we had, we had, we had to believe we would have that, and we did.
Well, I mean, I mean, going back to the complement, just like you said, you know, if it's a healthcare thing or whatever, you might get 20 people jumping out the door that are required. And that's what I'm saying, I mean, you're kind of, we're putting the horse before the cart in a way, because we want us to increase the complement, which we should. However, you know, we don't have a contract for either the police or the fire department, one's one year, one's two years, and we don't know what it's all going to expose, or how many people we're going to lose if there's certain things. So, I mean, we got to do something. This is, I mean, I mean, we're kind of caught, you know, we're kind of caught. Because what happens if you settle after you submit the complement, you know what I mean? And that costs more than what we're, you know, than we're thinking.
Heather, do you know when they're meeting next?
Either the end of January and the first week of February.
Say that.
The end of January or the first week of February, those are the two dates that.
So the mayor wants us, I'm not done yet, but the, the mayor, you know, we got so much time for the safer grant, but we don't know when the fire department's going to settle. I mean, I think the fire department should, you know, and the mayor should settle before you apply for the safer grant, so we can, we know where we're at, I think. I think it's, two years is kind of a long time, so.
It's.
So, I'm not sure, I mean, you know, they're pushing us to get the saver grant and, you know, send that through and everything else, and like you said, how are you going to put a safer grant if we don't know the complement, right? You want to increase it, but at the same time, we don't know at the end of the day what's going to cost us for the fire department or vice versa. You know, it might, like you said, a lot of people are sitting on the healthcare thing, and if they, you know, they don't get the wrong thing, they're, they're out the door. So, I mean, we're kind of in an impasse in a way. I mean, how are we supposed to do something like this? I mean, how do we decide that? How are we setting up the future councils and the future administrations for failure because we haven't done this yet? And it's been two years in arrears.
Right.
So I think somebody needs, I mean, you want us to do the safer grant, I think we need to end this contract and get it done.
Right, that's what I agree to.
That's all I have.
So you got, Councilman DeBranco and Council, Mr. Moody, you guys are running this meeting, right? And was anybody, I see in the audience, is, were they invited to this meeting? Do the, the union people have anything to speak under the?
Where's your invitation?
Well, it's not up to me, I mean, are they privy?
I, I personally invited them, and I talked on behalf of Delvin.
Oh, so the administration and stuff, nobody invited them, are they privy to speak?
I would yield my time to let both, both union presidents speak if they would like.
I'm cool with it.
I think they would only be fair if they've been in the audience and they both, they both came to show up.
And, and I just didn't know that they were formally invited.
That's why, that's why I asked.
I'm cool with it.
My email been all screwed up.
No, 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 it's good, it's good.
You're good with it.
Yeah, so I'm just.
Does anybody, any council persons, any other questions? Would you like to speak?
I'd like to speak, yes.
Can't speak.
Go ahead. Let him, let him speak.
First of all, I'd say thank you to Councilman DeBranco and Councilman Beatrice for bringing the employees' voice to the council. It's not the opportunity we get all the time to actually speak on behalf of the people doing the work uh, in comparison to a department head that might be getting information that is appointed by the mayor. Uh, we have a little bit more freedom as union representatives to speak honesty and speak truth uh, without being influenced by the person that appointed us or the person that we serve under as department head. Uh, so, thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak on behalf of the employees. Uh, now, after listening to everything that I just heard, there is a lot of misinformation that I would like to clarify uh, to this council, and a few things that I'd like to say.
Tommy, excuse me one second.
Yeah.
While you're talking here, as long as you're saying that, there, I'm going to want the budget director to respond to your, whatever you say also afterward. It's only fair.
Anybody can respond, and I'll, I'll answer any questions you guys have also.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
I, I hope to be as informative as I possibly can. Uh, first of all.
I'm going to limit you to four minutes, so move.
It's going to be people's answers.
Thank you.
So, I mean, if you guys got questions.
Go.
So, so first of all, the fact of the matter is, they have no intention of filing for a SAFER grant. There's been no movement on filing for a SAFER grant. We don't have a grant writer. Uh, the city of Utica Police Department has a full-time employed position as part of their complement, as a full-time grant writer. We do not. We received over one point three million dollars in grants by members of our department that stepped up and a wife of a firefighter that's a grant writer that assisted in getting a safer environment for her husband to work in. Uh, the opportunity for a SAFER grant is a once-in-a-lifetime thing right now. Uh, during the, the American, the AFA or the AGA, uh, the AA, the ARA funding, uh, in two thousand and twenty, in addition to the funding that we received, they dumped all types of money into our AFG awards, which is our equipment grants that we would get free equipment, which we did under our SCBA's and saved three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for the city. Uh, they upped all the money in that compartment for AFG grants for equipment for all of our departments. In addition to that, they dumped all types of money into the SAFER grant. They even changed the SAFER grant from a two-year program that was a cost-share program into a thirty-six months program with zero cost or contribution or zero cost sharing on the full salary and all benefits of the employees with no limit to how many you can approve and no, no limits on the amount of the award that could be granted. For instance, for you guys and some of the numbers that you're being provided that are, I disagree with, in a nice way to say it, uh, the city of Syracuse just granted a thirteen-man grant, a twelve or thirteen-man grant through the SAFER grant, and the three-year award is at six point three million dollars. That's the cost savings for the city of Syracuse for the free employment that they received. Federally funded, paid for by the government, not AGA money that, that you can utilize for other things that could save you guys money in your annual budgets. Now, with the whole point in the chief, which maybe he's restricted to say it a little bit, and I'll speak freely on it, you're worried about picking up the bill in three years. You got sixty-four million dollars of AGA funding. You're going to spend it on police officers, and then their jobs are going to expire at the end of three years instead of utilizing it for something that you guys are going to spend your money on that eventually come out of capital projects or, or the taxpayers' dollars or your actual tax roll from the individual taxpayers in the city of Utica. If you supplement some of those building repairs to the fire stations that you would take a capital project out for, if you take out for other things, that'll be eventually dumped on you guys as a council to put in your budget rather than being utilized out of the AGA money that I don't know how much oversight or input you guys have, but you should, to supplement our budget and our annual budget and the increases in our budget over the next three years being paid for and invested in properly for things that are going to save taxpayers three years from now to pick up the bill for those, those firefighters that you guys take on right now. We need more than anything.
One more minute.
We need more than anything, eight guys right now. We are desperate. We have been down since two thousand and twelve, we're fighting a pandemic. It's embarrassing. Our last three contract meetings have been canceled by the city. We do not have a scheduled date on hand for our next contract meeting. And you're talking about spending AGA money on additional police officer positions when we haven't been paid for two years for the services we provided during the pandemic? Going home and hugging and kissing our kids after going in and giving CPR to a COVID patient in respiratory arrest? It's terrible.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kirkland, thank you. I, I know you're getting.
I, I, I think you guys should be informed.
I know.
You guys do not hear from the people working on the streets enough.
Well, what I, what I want to welcome you to do.
You deserve to make your decisions. And if we're not allowed to give you that information.
Thank you.
You're being cut short.
All right, what I welcome you to do.
People in the city are being cut short on the services they should be provided because it's being muzzled.
All right.
It's being muzzled and dispersed in places.
Thank you. What I welcome you to do is you could send an email to all council members with your displeasure. That, that's all I want you to do. I, I gave you the floor.
I'm not trying to educate.
Thank you.
I'm not trying to complain.
I know, I know. Thank you, thank you.
Can I make a point?
Can I make, can I make one?
Yes, go ahead.
Statement quick, in the future, okay? When, when I'm told that there's a guest that's going to be invited, can we please know that if it's from the administration, where it's from? And all that, that's what I'd like to, that's what I'd like to know. I'd like to know beforehand if we have a guest list, where it's coming from, and.
I'd send them an invitation.
Oh, okay.
I can.
I'm just saying, and I'm not talking you in general.
She wanted to back up her legislation, that's fine.
When I get a call that I'm invited to a par, I want to know who invited you.
Right, but I don't have the authority.
All right, let's get back to business at hand. Anybody have any other questions?
Heather, I want you to respond.
For the chief? Or, Heather, would you like to respond?
I, I, I shared the numbers. There's nothing here that's really mysterious, okay, number one. I do want to correct a couple of things. Number one, once-in-a-lifetime SAFER grant, I guess maybe I'm too old. I believe we got a SAFER grant under Mayor Julian, um, I believe.
Hammer, uh, hammer.
Yeah, okay, so, um, and I, I want to correct one other thing with the council because I've heard it several times, and that's not your fault. Yes, we were awarded sixty-four million, but it could, due to administrative costs in Washington, we're only getting sixty, like sixty point four. So, I just, I want to stand corrected.
They tax us on that for whatever reason.
And then lastly, you know, I come here and I try to provide information to everyone. I don't hide anything, and I, I find it a little offensive. I, I'm not, because I was appointed by the mayor doesn't mean that the information I'm providing you is false or inaccurate. I'm happy to, to always fake, so I just, I'm a little bothered by that, but.
No, yeah, listen, you, 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 listen, every time we plummet you with questions, you always have the answer, and I'm happy for that. You do your homework, you're a very good budget director, you see the direction the city's going in financially. So I have no problems with Heather, so, I, I could tell you that right now.
And then lastly, I, I was told by the negotiating team, which Ventura and Andy Valan, that there was two days that the fire department could do. One at the end, last week of January, one the first week of February. It hasn't been set up, it hasn't been set up.
Sometimes you're not privy to it either.
And then, I, I was just looking through my emails because I, I'd like just the chief to echo. We did have a discussion about two months ago about hiring Ms. Berlini because she does have experience. The mayor told me to go ahead and get that done.
You're lying to the council.
I'm not lying to you.
All right, no, easy, that's it. Anybody have any other questions for the chief?
Can, can I, can I make a point?
Go ahead.
I want to make a point with regard to the order of all of this. Um, it has always been my intention, as I've explained to the unions, um, to have a time to include them, particularly with the budget season. That was something I wanted to introduce to this council prior to how the committee system went, that in the budget season, we would allow the unions to come in and speak, all unions, because we never heard that. And I said that prior to even getting. So, with this, in terms of the invited guests and aspect, and I get all the emails, I don't want it to be seen that I or anybody am, am trying to muddle that union perspective. I think that's important, that's why I said it in the, you know, when I was talking previously. So, I think we need to have another conversation on this. The time is running late though, and, um, I would like to have a structured conversation where maybe in written form, we can hear the information from the union or in a, or in a, uh, uh, organized way, hear both sides so that with the council can come to an informed decision on how we increase the complement for the fire department. But also too, I want to have that conversation because I don't want it to get into the narrative, right? That it becomes fire versus police or police versus fire. This council has a responsibility to support both, and I'm committed to supporting both, and I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yeah. The, the only point, to your point that I want to, that I want to make is, I, I think that maybe if we were to discuss this as far as with the timeline and so on and so forth of what we have, because.
That's a tight timeline too.
I think we only have one other meeting before that, that deadline date. So I think that if we were to pass this, I think that it would be responsible on our behalf to pass a contingent, at least for the fire department, for the purposes of the grant, the, the grant timeline, pass a contingent up to twelve firefighters depending on what they are awarded through the grant. So, I mean, that would be something that I would be, um, more than willing to do. Um, I don't want to limit, limit us to six if we can get twelve and figure out how that budgetary amount works out over the next three or four years.
What happens if there's no grant?
Then you don't get the, then you don't get it.
Nobody gets hired?
Then we got to come back to the table because we're not under a timeline for that. So then, you know, we could reintroduce the legislation of, of twelve firefighters actually again.
Can I ask another question? Would there be, maybe, and maybe this might be corporation counsel or the judge, would there be an additional resolution required? Or would us simply increasing the complement be sufficient for what they need for that grant?
Well, I think that we would have to put, we would actually have to amend the legislation.
Right, amend, George, but you know how sometimes they write additional resolutions.
Right, and we could say, we could say, be it ordained that depending on the awarding of the, the SAFER grant, that the common council does approve up to twelve members depending on what they decide to go ahead and put in. And then, and then obviously that would.
We could discuss that at a.
That would obviously would have to be, that would have to be adjusted, um, in a round.
And what happens after the SAFER grant?
She's got the floor. Let, Councilman Williamson and then Councilman.
Sure, sure, and that's all, and that's all I was saying, that I think that if, you know, I would like, I would like to see it. I mean, obviously I put in twelve, I want to see twelve. I mean, that's just my personal opinion and perspective on this whole entire thing. But I think to tie us to not seeing any of this pass, knowing that we have a time constraint on the SAFER grant, I think it would be smart to put in all twelve firefighters and see what the grant approval actually is and what the need would be.
We respect your opinion.
That would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
So, Chief, so if we say we, we do twelve, and we put it on the SAFER grant for twelve, could it possibly, just like Syracuse, they, they were going to, they're going to fund twelve?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I, I think, I, I'm not sure, I'd have to talk to Chief Man.
Like Syracuse is a bigger population, but they funded nine, I think, that's what I heard. There's a possibility they could fund twelve for the first three, four years? If we gave you that latitude of twelve?
Yeah, we're charging a number.
It's what they're doing, they're funding.
And they, and they, the way that they, they were cut back then, you know what I mean? I mean, they, they actually stayed there.
So I, I kind of, I concur with Councilwoman Testa, and, uh, I, I think we should just, like I said, we put like a little thing in there and basically says, hey, if it works, it works. If it don't, then we come back to the drawing table.
Councilman Miola.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We heard three numbers tonight, council. We heard the chief at five, we heard the president of the union at eight, and our colleague wants twelve, okay?
Did you say five? We're down five. Okay, we'll say, because I, you didn't say five.
Yes, he said five would be reasonable number. So, with that said, we have three different numbers here on the table. I do believe that we should come to consensus with that before we move on to legislation, number one. Number two, the chief and, um, our budget director didn't know the right direction to take if we actually need this legislation to start with. So whatever process we need to get this SAFER grant, please, help us. Uh, maybe the president of the union can help also, so we can put all our minds together. And we're all for more manpower to, more people power, I'm sorry, I got to say people power to the fire department. It's not an issue. But how we get there, we have to do it together. We have to work together to get there. So, um, if by possible, we can get that SAFER grant in motion, in double motion, um, maybe we can get this accomplished together and move forward in the number that's agreed from all of us. Thank you, Chief.
Good. Councilman Beatrice.
So, I have two questions. Uh, Councilman Miola, I agree what you're saying, but what, what, if we're going through this SAFER grant, we might, and the deal with the legislation is going to be, its only authority is if we get the grant, I think we should go for the highest number and go with it from there because we're not going to be paying for it anyways. For the, okay, and that's my next question. So what is our plan after three years? Okay, that's what I want to know. What's the plan? So, because if they're going to come back to me in three years and say, come up with a thousand different excuses that we got to cut here, cut there, I'm not doing that. So, I think, I think we need to be very smart in what we're, what we're doing. Because I'm never, I told you before with police, when I'm sitting in this seat, if I'm privileged to be here, I'm never cutting the police, the DPW, or the fire department. So, we need, it sounds great, they're going to pay for three years, what are we doing after three years?
Yeah, that, that, that'll be a discussion another day, I think. I think that, that's a great point, you know, because we got to be able to fund it in three years.
Exactly, exactly.
So, can I, uh?
Yeah.
Would it be possible to have numbers for both of those scenarios by tomorrow?
Yeah, because literally.
The, the, the five, the eight, and what?
And I, I will share the Excel for this because this isn't a mystery, and I would share it with both unions too because I, I want us to be consensus on the numbers. You may not like the number, you may not agree with the number, but the number per se, per person, I want us all to be on the same page. And literally, you just take that number and multiply it by five, two to one.
Well, you really wouldn't have any of those, any of those other numbers in there, like, like a police car.
Well, okay, the police car is so insignificant.
You know what I'm saying, like, you know what I mean? I think, I think after the.
That's only two hundred fifty thousand versus three million, I think, and that's not, that's ten percent.
Right, after the third year, I think that's the number that.
So if we can have that spreadsheet for what it would look like, given the, given the give grant tomorrow, I don't foresee that mitigation task force will take the entirety of the hour so we can, we can continue this conversation potentially tomorrow after we talk about what's on the agenda.
No, yeah.
Sounds good, whatever's in committee, we could discuss if we have time. All right, everybody good?
All good.
Adjourned. Thank you.